I call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock for the December 3rd, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. I am your host. I am the chair.
I'm your host?
I'm the Chair Stephanie Schlisch. To my right, I have alternate Chair Jimmy Carr. At the end, I have Doug Finn. To my left, John Jeffress. To the end over here, Lee Bell. And our Town Planner, Bella Yeager. Our first item on the agenda as always is public forum. This is an opportunity for folks who are not a part of the agenda, but do have, would like to speak and bring something to our attention, ask us questions. Now would be the time, but I believe everyone here is for an agenda item. Is there anyone here virtually that would like to provide any comment? That is not a part of our meeting? Okay, no, great. I mean, not great. Always want to have feedback and hear from the public, but... We are going to close the public forum and move to the approval of the November 5th minutes. These are extensive. Thank you.
I have read them and find that they're just perfectly fine, far from where I'm concerned. I'd be happy to make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? I read all but the last page, so I didn't get to the last part. Nothing big happens.
It is still weird to me that they're written in the present tense.
I just want to keep you on your toes as you're reading. It's suspenseful.
Is that it?
Yeah.
When suddenly...
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, minutes of the November 5th meeting are approved. The first item on the agenda is a special permit review for our 1218 Elm Street Benson Mini Storage.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
We'll be with you momentarily, Kyle. Sorry, we're some of you are virtual. So this is an informal conversation as far as...
Yes.
Okay, great. On the permitting process. Yeah, great.
So, this is Roger Jesswire from Berkshire Design Group, here on behalf of Benson Mini Storage. And if you recall, this involved 12 and 18 Elm Street. It included the, this was a permit that was issued back in '23. It included six new storage buildings on the site. At the time, there's a tenant in that single-family home at 12 Elm. It was still there, and so that was going to remain as far as they knew at the moment. There were no other plans to do anything. And so, construction has started. I think they've all, they've got all but two garages, two storage buildings to build. The barn is still standing, but is slated to come down at some point.
Would we expand?
When you expand.
Would we get it out of the way?
Yep, when there's a ban for that, right. And so, this request, so this project's still actively under construction, but only intended to construct. This request and discussion primarily entails 12 Elm, which is a...
18 Elm.
Or 18 Elm, I'm sorry. Which entails, currently it's about 11,250 or so square foot, single-family home, two and a half story, I think.
Six thousand square foot.
I was gonna say 11,000 square foot.
Six thousand. All right, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Seven bedrooms, three baths, pretty good sized house. The tenant that was problematic in there prior is now gone. The desire would be to renovate the structures such that it supported six, six multi-family units. Six units inside. The plan wouldn't be to change the exterior appearance of the building at all. Stephen from...
Austin.
Austin, yes, sorry, Austin Design is here with us to speak more to the building, but really the intention would be to preserve its character and all the glory that it is and really make most of renovations on the inside to make this a much more viable project for them. And it also, you know, in the interest of trying to protect and preserve, you know, some of the historic architecture in town, provide residential housing units, you know, at a price point that, you know, more folks would have access to compared to a large, you know, single-family home, is really the desire. And so, you know, one of the things we did is just go through some of the other requirements. And this is really understanding that this currently is a, given this is all industrial land, is currently residential use, is a pre-existing non-conforming use. And so, what the request is, is just to pretty much extend that pre-existing non-conforming use. And under Mass General Law, provided that some of these aren't provisions, as long as it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood, that that is a reasonable request. And just back to zoning, just ensuring that we comply with, you know, other standards, parking, screening, you know, all of those other zoning planning questions. You know, we did organize this a little bit more in the back. There's a large gravel area that is there now between the back of the house and the distant barn. Really just organizing that to accommodate enough parking spaces for the number of units, guest spaces. Make sure there's, you know, emergency access and whatnot from the site perspective. But otherwise, really try and leave the site, you know, very much, sort of building and structure and landscape out in front, very much exactly the way that it looks.
And then introduce yourself just for that.
This is Alejandro. I'm Alejandro. I'm the owner of property. Along with my partners. I think what we're asking to do is to change the pre-existing non-conforming use to another non-conforming use, rather than extend it to, for example, more area or something like that.
We do allow for one single dwelling on an industrial parcel, so that would be annoying.
Yes. So, either the...
Architecturally drawn, oh yeah, no, that's, no, thank you for making that clarification. And that's part of the discussion, just making sure that, you know, we're asking for the right thing and that, you know, whatever is granted or, you know, wherever the discussion goes is, you know, considered bringing in. So, yes, Stephen, you can speak more to the building, but obviously, you know, it's a, it's a pretty elaborate brick structure.
I could say something about that, sure.
Probably better than I can.
So, when we started, when we started this whole project, our assumption is that we would sell the house. We never wanted the house. We're in the storage business. We thought at first we were going to subdivide the whole front of the lot. We went through that whole thing and determined that condo-izing was the way to go and that we would sell that one house off to someone. We also assumed, and I still sort of assume, that the buyer of that house would be someone who would want to subdivide it and make it multifamily, because I assume no one's going to want to raise their family in front of a storage facility. Could be wrong, but, but we're pursuing this project to make it easier to sell. We're not planning to actually do this redevelopment ourselves, but to get it permitted and then to be able to hand it off to a buyer who would then turn it into condos probably, within the condo, condo within the condo.
Or nobody would want to buy necessarily just the house?
I don't think they would...
Without the land? Because that's how it would work?
No, it's not that so much, because in fact, the way they would buy it is just the house, like a condo. It would be a single unit, and then they would get a dedicated area around the house as if they owned it, but it would technically be owned by the condo association, but it would be for their fruits of use, just like any condo that has a little yard, right? But the key thing here is that we're assuming we're going to sell this to someone who's going to develop it into multifamily. And we're trying to make it easier to do that. If we were trying to sell it for someone like that, and then we were going to walk away and they didn't have a relationship with the town or with you or no history and so on, we're presuming it would be harder for them to navigate the process than for us. So, that's why we're here, and we're trying to understand exactly, for two things really. One, what exactly is the process? What is it that I'm supposed to ask Jeff to ask for? And we think it's this change of a non-conforming use to another one. And then two, this is an opportunity to get any feedback for you that we might, that you might have. So, Jeff has done the civil plan that he just had up on the screen. Austin Design has, has done kind of an example floor plan.
Yeah.
I don't really see it as my job to dictate what the redevelopment would be, but, but I did ask Austin to mock up, here's an example of how it could go. And that's what, what we're going to show next, unless you have other questions or comments.
I have one question. You said there's parking. How many parking spaces do you feel like you have? How many parking spaces do you feel like you need? I shouldn't say that. How many parking spaces do you feel are necessary for six units? Is that what you're talking about, six units?
Yeah.
How many parking spaces do you think you need for six units, considering that not every unit is going to be a single person?
Yeah.
Or bylaws also.
Twelve are required.
I think, I think the bylaws are two per unit, so we've got 14 spaces.
Okay.
And then there's still, you know, obviously something, from a site perspective, the goal would be to find a driveway, in the event that there were, you know, a larger group there, something that could park in the lawn or...
And also assuming that whomever buys it wants to create six, so this is like all, in a way, hypothetical. At the most that we could allow per our bylaws, if we can find a way how to do this within our bylaws, we, the way our bylaws work, we only allow up to six units in one dwelling. So that is why I think they're pursuing like what the most that could potentially happen. Again, this is a very complicated, as we all know, very complicated parcel. In that we inherited, and you inherited, a kind of a mess frankly, that we, we as not currently us of we, but a planning board of past kind of created, previous owner of past created. And so now we're kind of trying to slog through it.
And improve it.
Right. You had, I think, wanted to go through a special permit amendment avenue?
That was one theory.
That was one theory. I think part of that was maybe because there was the impression that only one special permit can be active on a site at once. I actually don't think that there, that that's maybe true. I think you can have multiple on a site at once. Does anyone have?
I don't, I don't, I don't think there's any problem with that.
I, I think that from the research I've done, it seems like there's nothing really prohibiting having two special permits active currently or at once. And so, it might make more sense based on the increased impact not to try to wedge this into a special permit amendment, but to open a new special permit. Because I think to argue that it was able, that it's able to fit into a special permit amendment, it would have to be something fairly minor. But since you can, I think, have two special permits open at once, there maybe wouldn't be a problem with that approach as one possibility. So, what, your outcome here is to like figure out what needs to be, what, how to square the bylaws in a way that, to see if it's possible to do the six-unit condo thing.
Yeah, from my perspective, what documents we need, so that to you that you can approve.
Right.
From my perspective, I'd love to see that.
For sure.
You'd love to see what?
I'd love to see a house, whether it's apartmented up or condominium.
Or one giant unit, right.
So... It seems to have been, since the Benson family had or didn't have any more to do with the property, it seems to have come into limbo, so to speak, with no, nobody really having an idea what's going on over there until you guys buy it.
It's been poorly maintained or not maintained hardly at all.
It's been a nightmare, you know, having been in this town for 40 years. I've watched it go from, from something that was really spectacular and special for this town to now being an eyesore.
Haunted house vibe, if you will.
So, so we, I think that we would relish something positive being done on that property with that structure.
Yeah.
And, yeah, we are stuck with the bylaws. We have, want to make sure whatever we do for ourselves and for your sake is legally sound.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
The cool thing about the winter is that all the leaves come down from the trees and you can actually see in between existing houses into backyards and past the backyards into what's behind the backyards. I was driving down Elm Street, the other end of Elm Street, and I happened to look, because right, right about the camp院. And I happened to look past one house into the backyard and saw something like a seven-bay garage. And I went, I've never seen that before. There's something going on there. That sparked in me a, just a thought process. It's a bigger zoning question. It's a bigger zoning picture that I think we might consider to creating a new backlot zoning that would allow for non-impactful business uses that would not meet, you know, create a heavy impact to residential uses. That would be complimentary to, or at least not disruptive. The use on this property is passive, for lack of a better term. People drive to it, they put some stuff away, they go away. There's no heavy equipment, there's no daily deliveries, there's nothing on it. And I'm talking the storage units. It's not incompatible with residential use. That being said, this is one parcel, yes, that is zoned industrial, light industrial, right?
Heavy industrial.
It's zoned heavy industrial? So, whether it's light industrial or heavy industrial, a special permit can be granted for one residence by the planning board. But multi, a single dwelling resident, a single unit residence. But multi-unit residences are not allowed at all under the code zoning law.
We can grant, we can, through special permit, we can consider a change of use of a pre-existing non-conforming use. It's the same section, 3.4.4.
But if the end result of that is to change of use to something that's not allowed, we can't, we can't do that.
Six residences on an industrial lot.
The, the, the single-family residence is a pre-existing halfway non-conforming use that if we really wanted to be, get neurotic about it, we could issue a special permit. There it is, and it blesses that. But we can't convert any use to something which is not allowed in the zone without a variance, which doesn't make sense. I'm not saying this to stand in the way of the project. I agree with everything that's been said. We'd love to see the house renovated. We, six units in that place, doesn't scare me whatsoever. I think it'd be a good way to preserve the architectural integrity of the outside of the building whilst providing some housing options and making it more affordable to develop. It's a good idea.
I feel like...
But all, if we were to do that, if we were to change it to a non-conforming use that's not allowable, then all it takes is for one disgruntled neighbor to appeal it, and it will get overturned, because we've done something that we can't legally do.
It would be contrary to the bylaw.
Right.
Absolutely not, yeah.
Right, so, so essentially, essentially where you are is because of the, because we're restricted by the way the bylaws are written.
Yes.
That short of a zoning change itself, we're handcuffed.
Rural residential? Huh. Where were we?
This is contrary to the legal advice we've got.
Yeah, I would just question that, under the Mass General Law, that there is a section...
48.6.
46, right.
48.6.
Right. That extension of pre-existing non-conforming use, you know, if the use is not allowed, it would require a variance to begin with. And so, if it's an extension or expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use, and it's non-detrimental to the neighborhood as, you know, minimal, you know, impacts that are et cetera, there is, you know, there is Mass General Law that does allow for some expansion of those, those uses that otherwise wouldn't be allowed.
I think the words, let's get the words right. So this is a change of use, extension or expansion or of the footprint, just so we're all clear.
It's not an expansion of the footprint. You're going to stay within the footprint of the structure. You're not planning on changing the structure significantly.
To me, the way that our bylaw is written, it wouldn't make any sense for the meaning to be that we need to issue a special permit to allow a conforming use.
Well, again...
We would need to issue a special permit to allow a different non-conforming use. Does that make sense? Otherwise, we wouldn't need to issue a special permit.
My mind is twisting.
I know, it's a problem.
The difficulty is that, the difficulty is that, for example, in, in, in the industrial zone, I'm going to pick something, a gas station. I don't know if that's allowed in heavy industrial or not. Maybe it is. Let's say it's not, just for, for argument's sake. The, the single-family house is permissible in the heavy industrial, but it's, it's conditionally permissible. It requires a special permit, but it is conditionally permissible in that zone. The fact that it existed before the zoning changed on that land turns it into a pre-existing use, and it blesses it. It, it gives it the status of a specially permitted or conditionally permitted use. We're now saying that we want to change that conditionally permitted use into something that is not allowable under the zoning. That if, if that were a blank piece of land, we could not give a special permit for a five-unit structure. It's just simply not allowable because of the zoning and because the zoning is different from everything else around it. I mean, if we want to go forward and say, sure, we'll do a public hearing, we'll do the special permit, we'll change the use to a six-unit, again, I think all it takes is for one person to appeal that. And we risk the decision being overturned, which nobody wants to have to go through that.
So, so are we between a rock and a hard place here?
I think so. I think what we should do...
I would actually say that, even though it costs money, I would say I'd want to see towns council.
That's what I was going to say. I think we should speak to town council again about whether the word "change" in our bylaw would allow for a change from one pre-existing non-conforming use to another in this instance. And then the alternative, just to be clear to you, I think amended site plan, amended special permit is, I don't think possible. Can we clarify, is that, we can't...
I don't think that's what we want to do.
Right.
No.
So that's probably not the approach.
Well, is the idea, is the long-term goal to actually separate this land off and sell it separately from the storage units?
We figured out we couldn't do that.
Because you lose your...
That was the last year problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're working within that constraint.
Why don't you just move in the house, Alejandro?
I haven't thought of that. I would love to live in haunted house.
So, amending a special permit, I, I don't think, I think this is too great of a change to fit into an amended special permit. I think the avenues would either be if we can clarify with town council whether it's possible to consider this a change, or whether it's allowed under our bylaw to do a change from one pre-existing non-conforming use to another in this case. Or the third option would be what you were saying, which is that you could change it to rural residential.
Which is what we tried to do.
Which would allow you to continue the storage unit work. And then you would have effectively a by right ability to do six units.
Not, not by right. It would have, still have to apply for a special permit the way our process is for a six unit.
But it would be... Is it still special permit? Or is it?
Yeah, SPB for rural, if it was rural residential conversion into...
Among the... SBA.
Site plan approval.
Site plan approval.
Special permit was site plan approval.
Site plan approval, okay.
Really? We should change that.
Our legal counsel, my understanding of what his opinion was is that as long as the new non-conforming use is not more detrimental to the neighborhood, that it can't be denied.
But the, the nuance that we're saying...
Not true.
No, it's, it's, it's not a by right thing.
Okay.
So that's, so this is where also, where like I'm being a little protective in that, we have spent a lot of time on this parcel, which is like, obviously we want to help you out and stuff too. But also like, I would like to see, what is the question that your council wants to ask us? And then we can talk to our council about it, instead of us trying to like workshop around like what the right question is. Because I would like to see you come to us with what you're looking for, and then we can see if it's possible, as opposed to us trying to work around, like I want, obviously we want to be accommodating to you and like support you.
They stayed in it pretty clearly.
I think we have a question.
Okay.
We need to...
I want to make sure.
They think they've, they've gotten advice that says this can be done.
I don't think I would like to see the writing, see and writing from them, as opposed to us where doing the writing and doing that legwork. You know what I'm saying? Like, that's more my, my request, is that I want to see what the request...
It just feel, well, more impactful, I guess. Maybe that's the trigger, is something that's not more impactful than the existing use on the site.
Detrimental.
Detrimental.
Not impact.
Negatively impactful, yeah, okay, fair enough, but...
So the reason that the language, "it can't be denied," is not quite right is because the determining detriment is...
Is subjective.
Subjective.
So it's not like something that has to be accepted if you check certain boxes. There's a consideration process, exactly, yeah.
I think the one caveat we have here, though, is what Doug just said. If we don't go about this in a completely proper and straightforward and out-front way, then we could get in, you guys could get into the middle of this project, and then a neighbor can say, eh-eh, I don't want that.
Yeah, I mean, the neighbor would have a certain amount of time to object or to appeal the decision.
Which is, I understand if they're trying to sell this, they don't want, that's why the seller doesn't want that risk. Or the buyer doesn't want that risk, right.
If we, if we get legal advice from council that says, yes, you can change this to a multifamily unit with a special permit that's considered a change of use, you must make certain findings to, to, you know, allow that to proceed. If council says that we can do that, then I don't have a problem moving forward as it is.
So that's our question.
Just on, on the face, it jars. It's like walking across glass for me. It's... So, I mean to be very careful, because as you said, the presentation, the proposal, is not something I think that's at all bad. I think it's a great idea. Please, I don't mean to, you know, dismiss the proposal itself. It's trying to find the right legal way, and we were, we've been talking about this for six months. The fact that our zoning is kaflooey, and we really need to examine it. We need to look at not only the allowed uses in each zone, but also the zoning itself, where they are, how they're laid out.
Because all of these sticky situations are related to these parcels that are plopped in the middle of these other zones, so...
Well, I think the other, the other thing that kind of touches on what you said is we also have to consider what detrimental things may occur if we give them the end around. You know, who comes in later and gets that end around on a, on a project that's not as, that's not as pretty as... And I don't have a specific example, I'm just saying, I think we need time to chew on that.
Right.
I think the first step is for me to double-check with council about this word "change" and what do you think?
And I want, like I said too, like, I want like legal, if there's any way to like you to get the, some of the language that, the argument, because we're not, we're not council. I don't want us to spend a lot of like more time and money going back and forth with the nuances of council if like they can provide legal language from their attorneys. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Sure, if you have something that they have written out, send it our way.
I think what you're saying is you want, you want a letter that says what our attorney thinks the legal theory is.
The advice they've given you.
That gives, that gives towns council a starting point, yeah.
That way, we're not trying to write.
Right, and we're... Because you know how like, I mean, at least like lawyers can be like, you ask them one question and it's like not the right, exact right question, and they go into this rabbit hole and you end up with like, like, but I didn't...
Right.
I mean, right.
More the point you don't understand why they went in that direction, that you didn't get the answer you wanted, yeah.
It's like one wrong word and like your casual email to them, right? So like, this is more where I'm trying to like make sure that we both, yes, thank you.
Compared to the kinds of things that I'd be looking at in terms of the proposal.
After the fact, like...
No, let's, let's assume that we can move forward and we can consider the proposal. The kinds of things that I would be looking for would be, A, we don't have the right to regulate the interior of the structure. That's not a concern for me. I don't need to see floor plans. I don't care how many bedrooms, all of that. As long as you have the water and wastewater permits to do the number of bedrooms you're talking about, that's all that matters, and that's outside of our scope.
The floor plans are here for the public meeting that's going to come later. You have one not for your bedroom.
Right, yeah, no, we don't, right, but my point is that we don't care. We don't, we don't regulate the interior of habitable dwellings, so there's that. What I would be interested in is, you know, and having the floor plans is good, because you're going to need to understand what kind of egress you need from the building, whether, if you're having multiple units on multiple floors, each are going to need two means of exterior egress. That's oftentimes, that can come through an interior common hallway, but a lot of times it has to be an exterior. Now you're putting stairways on the outside of the building. What's that going to look like? Is that going to, you know, is that going to violate the integrity of the structure? Those would be the things I would be looking for, maintaining as much as possible the original exterior architectural integrity of the building. No, I'm simply saying, this is the kind of things that, once we get into the special, special permit, public hearing, those are the kinds of things I'd like to see.
It wasn't advertised. We don't want to, we do too much in the way of deliberating.
Landscape design, landscape...
So to cut to the chase, I think we need a letter from your attorney stating why it's okay to do this. And, and, and we could, we could beat this back and forth for hours, but that's, the next step has to be that.
Yeah.
Yep. And making sure that Bella is asking the right thing that we're leaning, that we are like aligned.
We're going to basically give our attorney the letter and say, are they right?
Right.
Right.
Is it change to an agroform? Is it an extension of an agroform?
And we do not look badly at this project. We would, we would love to see that facility have six units of housing in this town, which we desperately need.
Or even just one, that's makes the house less than up.
Whatever, but we're not looking unfavorably at this. We would love to see that property... We would love to see that property do something more than it's doing sitting there, looking ugly right now.
Yep. Yeah, that's it, really. I mean, it's a legal thing, we get the legal thing out of the way.
We're good.
Yeah. We've charged forward on this property once and gotten ourselves hung up, so let's make sure we get it in order.
So one thing I came in this evening with was an expectation that we would show you what we're thinking in terms of the redesign of the exterior, to have an opportunity to get any input from you informally before the next meeting, that, that would be more formal, a public meeting. Are you suggesting we would have to do that?
We'd be in trouble doing that.
We just can't be like, I'd rather see this or that, like, just be like, hmm, yes.
And I'm not talking about the interior floor plan, but the kind of issues you raised, like, how are we planning to change the exterior?
Yeah, I think that's fair to, to look at.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't think we can comment specifically on it.
We can all mumble and pause.
I think Doug has given you the concerns that we would have, but we're certainly interested.
And I agree, more opportunities to tell, to show public, the better.
So sidebar note, internal, the kinds of questions that we ask, the kinds of things that we want to see, these are the kinds of things that should actually be in the bylaw.
Yep.
You know, if you're coming with a presentation, the planning board wants to see this, and this, and this, and this. If it involves the historic structure, they want to know that the structure's being maintained in the exterior, you know, these are the kinds of things that we, if we can put it in our bylaw, then it makes this process a lot easier, I would think.
Or outside of the bylaws, the administrative pieces.
Yes.
Indeed, the dream, the dream. Kyle's still there?
Sorry, Kyle.
Oh.
He's still there.
He's still there.
Hi, Kyle.
He's still being patient.
Couple more minutes.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi. Hi, Kyle. Couple more minutes, thank you.
Okay, well, turns out we don't have.
Okay. It looks beautiful. On side view, that house is huge, huh?
Yeah, so here's the-
Yeah, really.
Historical integrity, consistency, architectural consistency. You're not gonna try to take roof into a gambrel roof, something like that.
Stephen Stone, Austin, Missouri.
Hi.
Hello.
Everything on the exterior remains exactly the same, except obviously you brought up that you're gonna need to set egress, and that's gonna be this area here, matching the, very similar in a way, brick pattern, color, and everything, so it all blends in. We're gonna have this little area here, which is gonna be currently exterior to the building, it will be, it will be an interior stairway when we're finished. And, and it's also tucked around the back, so it won't be seen from the main road, it's not gonna affect the historical character of the building. And then as you come around the side, it's still gonna be, it's gonna have still gable with all the-
So this piece on the side, which way is that gonna face?
The street is this way.
The street is this way.
Okay.
And this sticks out proud this way.
Okay.
It's kind of tucked behind.
Okay.
So you can't see it from the front.
Yeah.
Sorry, the mini drawings. You know, so, this is the-
It's the side view.
Yep. And what it's replacing is this-
This is the very back, looking toward the street.
Uh-huh.
And this is tucked in behind.
Gotcha. Yeah.
And it's taking the place of, there was already an existing door and a porch. And the porch itself is- What's the question?
Just the way it's designed, this, this comes off as a separate slope off of this back roof. Does it merge with the main? And I'm just not having a harder time reading the drawing.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have a real plan for it.
It's fine, I don't really, it's not that important.
The water does run off, if that's what-
That's pretty much what I'm picking of. Yeah, okay, yeah, all right. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you.
And the, I'm sorry, the back building, is there a back building on the property that would act as a garage? Is that the idea?
No, there's, well, there's a barn there now.
Okay, okay, and you would just make open parking areas out back, okay.
Barn has survived its one-year demo delay. And now it's ready to go.
What, really?
Speaking to the demolition expert.
And also has screening for whatever, after those, that was approved, too. So there would be house parking screening, a vegetative screening, and then storage units when the-
Hate to bring it up, but maybe some consideration for EV chargers, if it's gonna be open parking and it's gonna be condo units? Doesn't, the facility to be able to do it, in other words, electric out towards the parking lot, terminating in a box that could provide 100 amp service for a couple of chargers, possibly, I don't know. Something to think about.
The condo fees can pay for that.
Yeah.
Do they have chargers for you or for you, or for old school?
I don't know.
What's that?
No chargers at the school.
Old school across the street.
No, I don't know, I don't know.
What, on Main Street?
No, but they have separate garages.
Do you have any other questions? Yeah.
Separate garages in the back.
We'll confer in the meantime.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Talk to you soon. And I have your order of conditions, I just had to run it by Mark, and I will get it to you. ASAP, probably Thursday.
Please leave with the feeling that we are supporting this project within the realm of all the rules and regulations that we have to follow. Because we need housing in this town.
And denser housing.
Denser housing, absolutely, so, thanks for coming with us.
Thank you.
If my lawyers believe-
Right.
That was his first mistake, Your Honor.
Thanks so much.
Talk to you soon.
All right, next item on the agenda, which, we're gonna, we're gonna go to Kyle.
Kyle, you the man.
I hope you're eating dinner, I'm hungry. We were talking about eating dinner. Hello. Pretty good. Oh, hi. All right, thanks, and thank you, Andrew, for joining us.
My pleasure.
We have a few items in, to discuss. It looks like, what do we want to talk, tackle first? Because it looks like Kyle's a part of two of them. One of them, two of them?
Well-
He's here mostly to speak about-
Yeah, he's here for number three. He might have things to say about number two, but three is the reason he's with us this evening.
All right. Part of the Ballot Plan Commission completed their comprehensive zoning review, which was, he gave the presentation at our last meeting. We've had time to digest the very comprehensive, comprehensive zoning review document, and we're here mostly for any sort of questions or follow-up, and any, we could talk about, a little bit about what we're, what we're thinking about as next steps, or any takeaways.
And also, just so you know, Kyle, we didn't get to print the one that you sent at three, because I wasn't in the office and Laurie wasn't in the office. So we have the one from last time that she printed out. If there's anything significantly different, I printed out the best bylaw for folks, so just flag anything that's different if you're going through it.
Yeah, I, the most significant change, there's really minor edits, just based on some feedback from Stephanie, particularly related to the ongoing discussion about rezoning some of those spot zone parcels, or the split zoning, instances of split zoning across the town. So there's no real significant changes or substantial changes to the comprehensive review document itself. We added those state model bylaws for both solar and battery energy storage systems. That's why the new version is substantially longer, because of those conclusions. But we recognize that it's, it's really the best guidance that we can provide at this time, so we're happy to add that into the document. And, yeah, I don't, I don't think we have really much more to add at this point, but just wanted to double-check, make sure that there weren't any, any outstanding issues or concerns that came up as you all have been reviewing kind of our final draft.
Regarding the battery energy storage system model bylaw, and I'm only just looking at it, but I'm, I'm on page two, the definitions, the three tiers, are those consistent with state law?
I would presume so, given that the model is brought to-
Oh, this is from the state, I'm sorry. Okay, never mind.
Yeah.
I'm gonna want to look at that more. Thank you. Didn't even realize that. Look at this instead.
And I know the primary reason for you to come to this meeting is for us to address any, clarifying questions or ask anymore, is there anything else that you wanted to speak on tonight with us about this?
No, I think, you know, I think the town is in a really good position right now, given the recent one-stop grant award to really approach a real comprehensive zoning overhaul.
I would like to take a moment and mention that, because I don't think we said that yet, did we say that, share that at the meeting? Didn't it happen like the day after our last meeting?
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
That.
There you go.
I don't know, I don't know the exact number, so you don't know.
Ninety-seven thousand dollars?
Ninety-six, what came to mind. So let's call it ninety-six, so we don't get our hopes up.
Be safe. We've received-
Hope for that extra thousand.
Ninety-six thousand dollars from Community One-Stop For Growth Grant, or the comprehensive zoning revision work to follow this set of recommendations. Very exciting. Great.
Yay. I think we like, it was embargoed until like the day after our last meeting, so we couldn't say anything until then, so. Okay, thank you.
Sorry to steal the thunder there.
Oh, no problem.
I, I will say that just in terms of this endeavor and the amount of funding that Hatfield has received, you are getting significant amount of money above and beyond what other communities have gotten to do this type of work.
That's great.
So I'm, I'm-
That's great.
Been encouraging Bella to consider, you know, really going deep on zoning map analysis, really thinking about your districts, really thinking about, you know, going outside the box in terms of what you want to do, thinking about developing a very robust engagement program to get more people involved, to get more people thinking about it, because you have a lot more money than other communities that are doing very similar work.
Wow, that is not something you hear often, so that is exciting. Thank you for highlighting that.
Kyle, are there elements of that that come to mind, of things you'd want us to consider, like, like a form-based code or something? Are there things that, that you like, that you might recommend?
Absolutely, I mean, that, that's a direction, you know, I think, I can't remember if it was written into the original grant proposal, but I remember coming out of the comprehensive plan, you, the, the comprehensive planning effort identified state programs like 40R Smart Growth Zoning, or the PIER program, 40Y Starter Home Zoning. You know, those are options, those are very, I think, appealing options to consider if you're gonna think about rezoning, to align any new rezoning efforts to those state programs so that the town is ineligible for incentive payments and bonus payments for any housing development that comes online in those districts. And you have a timeline that I think could afford the engagement that's necessary to explore that. And you have the budget to do the additional work, because those elements typically have, you know, additional mapping that's included, to kind of calculate what the real benefit is of pursuing those programs. So form-based code, state incentive zoning programs like 40R, 40Y, I think are really exciting. And I just think also, a more, a real, a more nuanced kind of analysis of zoning and the real constraints to development that you face as a community with unique geography, including your hydrology, your soils, and your slopes. Yeah, so it's, it's, I think it's, the additional funding, I think, is, is gonna help really allow you as a community to really pursue this endeavor of a zoning overhaul reorganization and kind of reimagining fully. That's really exciting, so I wish you all the best in that. It's a big task.
It's been a controversial one already.
It's always controversial when you're changing things.
Yeah, yeah.
Questions from anyone from the board?
No, this is a lot to digest. Definitely want some more time to dig into it.
Yeah, no kidding.
But I mean, everything I've seen so far shows that it's, it, you know, it meets its name, it's comprehensive, and that's good. Looking at the, the short-term recommendations, I think on page 22, no objections to any of those. I might be wanting to further consult to get, unless it's in here somewhere, a little bit more detail as to any specific changes that might be recommended, particularly when it says revise and update outdated provisions. I know it sort of touches on a few of those, but it'd be nice to have them in more detailed bullet points, when it comes time to do that work. I'm sure those resources will be available.
Would that be what the consultant that we would presumably hire for the actual revision, would they run with this and apply it and pull?
I would assume, yeah.
The specifics, yeah.
I also really, I would tend to agree with Kyle, that I think if we've got the time and we've got the resources to do it, I'd love to look at everything almost with a, a fresh, clean slate in front of us. The project we just sort of got a glance at earlier, and what I was mentioning, where we have a lot of backlot development that doesn't match the front street-side, you know, impression of the neighborhood, but it's not a conflict, it's not a problem. How do we encode that into zoning to make it work and to make it still protect the residential nature of the neighborhood? We see it everywhere, all kinds of streets, up and down streets throughout town. How do we make that work? Or is there a way to make that work? If we can really look at things with a fresh set of eyes and get some objective, you know, opinions on it, I think it might be to our benefit.
Really?
So.
Yeah, if, if I may, Bella, I-
Please.
Like I, I think I caught most of that, and forgive me if I didn't, but I would just speak to the, a more detailed or a bit fuller list of those incomplete or outdated provisions.
Yep.
They are, they do start on page 15.
Oh, very good, thank you.
And the recommendations, we can kind of point to one or two, but there, there is a bulleted list.
Very good.
And then in terms of using this product as a real starting line for the comprehensive, like full comprehensive zoning reorganization and update, that's typically how we approach it when we've taken on the, the type of work, when, when a community has this type of a document, you know, it may be that we just start with a simple, we start moving the existing zoning into the new format, and we start reading through that line by line, start making annotations. I will add the caveat as well, that when we've done this work, we've usually set aside a portion of the budget for legal consultation, that is with a firm that is not the Town Council, so to get another land use, legal, kind of review of issues that we flag as potential compliance issues with the state law. We always advise the town to, to request their legal counsel to have another review of it, but we, we always try to set aside a budget for some legal consultation services.
Makes sense, right. Related to that piece, though, Doug, you're like, oh, look at the recommendations, and then like, what are the specific recommendations? And you go back in that, and there's, but then there's like so much there, so there's like, Miles- And there's, but then there's like so much there. So there's like, Myle, you know, as I always often talk about, like, okay, so what's our order operations here? And coupled it with grant funding opportunities and town meeting, and like, what is, how do we back ourselves into moving on some of this in a way that makes sense? And then also, I know that we have the opportunity for, what do you call it?
Ecode 360.
Ecode 360, which is like.
segue into that, because if you could help us understand a little bit about the sequencing of that, I went through this document and kind of flagged things that I thought might be covered by Ecode 360, and then things that might be perfect for a consultant to work on during the, you know.
As a refresh, what is Ecode, Ecode 360?
It is.
Ecode 360 is, is a, it's a company that, that specializes in taking towns' municipal codes and basically digitizing them and codifying them, helping them re-codify them in a way that's better organized, easier to read for multiple audiences, and it's more of a living document, more easy to, to update as you make changes. And also does a really good job of tracking what changes were made when. So you can go online, a lot of different towns have, have used this system. It's very helpful. Town of Hadley has their, their, both their zoning and their general ordinances there, and it's, it's a pretty good system. So our plan is, we, we have a few things going on all at the same time. We have a more general review of our bylaws that's happening, part for zoning bylaws or general bylaws, when we've been talking to different departments, boards, missions about changes they'd like to see made, updates we'd like to make to make it more modern, and also just capture things that have changed in state law and everything else. What Ecode 360 is good at is helping you reorganize everything, make sure it's in a more readable, easy-to-follow format. What they'll also do is they'll do a comprehensive review to make sure that things comply with state law, that you're keeping up with your peers, and as far as things that probably should be changed, modernized, everything else. So we are planning to engage them for our general bylaws, and they would also, in the same package, work with our zoning bylaws. Obviously, we have a lot going on with our zoning right now as we want to do this comprehensive review as well. I think we can be very specific with them about what we do and what we don't want them to do. I think the organizing, I think the, the comparisons across other towns, I think the compliance with state law, all of that we want to see happen. And I think it would be a good thing to, to do with our zoning bylaws. And then as far as content, all of that would come from changes that this board and the consultants that we're hiring for the conference review would do.
What are we talking about for money?
About $12,000 total.
For both the town bylaws and the planning board bylaws?
And they would also codify and, and digitize any of their policies that exist from any other boards.
And then do we have access to like, you say it's easy to then update going forward? Do we have control in doing that, or is it like?
Anytime it passes, you know, town meeting, and the, the town clerk is updating it, they would also send it to Ecode 360 who makes those updates.
Cool.
And where does the money come from?
I believe there's room in our general budget for this year, believe it or not.
Wow.
Yeah, I know. I made sure not to cut those lines, and we'll talk about special today later, but yeah. We have, we have some room.
In terms of timing, so what we've talked about maybe is that, so it's over the course of 2026 they're doing this?
Yep. Oh, sorry, this is fine. Think about it as around 18 months of timing.
So, and we're, maybe you had said, we're not trying to do the format changes that Ecode 360 will be working on, we're not trying to take those to a town meeting for a vote at the same time as a bunch of substantive changes to the zoning, because that might be overwhelming?
In reality, it's probably gonna have, it's probably gonna all have to be at the same time.
So we're talking about most significant changes to the zoning bylaw plus recodification.
Yes.
Reorganizing the sections, moving them around, changing the numbering, that sort of thing.
It's gonna take a lot of explanation and handholding to show people, here's where this was and here's where it is now. But at the end of the day, you have much better zoning and much better bylaws.
We're talking about 2027.
Town meeting.
Okay, so for, so part of what we are gonna be talking about tonight is what to try to bring, obviously, to 2026 town meeting.
So that, and if we pass something for 2026 town meeting, will it be included?
Yes.
In the east, okay. Yeah, so we, any like.
Things that we need to do for 2026 bylaws, it will still be updated. And I would encourage you to still make those changes because it'd be things that you'd want to see happen.
If anything, like encourage us to, yeah, to like put some, some changes in that we're ready for.
If there's anything that needs to be done, we can't wait for that to happen. So we would just want to do that, and then it would also be incorporated into the Ecode 360.
360 is flexible. It'll take the old one, and it takes the new one, and it keeps the tracks of changes.
So it would be some of these recommended things that Kyle's provided, like the best energy storage system, or like, we want to update and put in a home-based business bylaw, or we'd like some of these other extra things that we should think about adding. And then, so the idea is that we add them, even if they're not like, even though our current bylaws are not perfectly formatted, but then they'll take them because now they have the meat of what we want, and they will reformat them. Even though if then, a year or two from then, we completely update our map and move to form-based or whatever, which is probably what would be likely.
Correct. And in terms of their legal review, would that go into stuff like exclusionary zoning?
If they find anything that's.
It's a violation of fair housing.
If we can.
Yes.
Kyle, what were you gonna say?
I, I would presume so. I've, I've had a little bit of interaction with General Code, the company that offers the service, and I would presume that they would, they would definitely check for compliance with federal laws like fair housing and such.
So at the latest, like if we did nothing in terms of like exclusionary zoning separately, that would be something that they would have recommendations or changes for by 2027?
Yes, they, they would have recommendations on that, yeah, if they find anything that, that they believe is inconsistent with state or federal law.
But it's the same kind of recommendations that.
It's in here too.
Already flagged it.
It's just that they would be recommending new language. That would be the next step to this.
Oh, they would be recommending the actual language?
They may be, yes. If they, if they have language that comes from other towns.
Because some of the language, obviously, Kyle's provided, but some of it is flat, flagged as stuff that we need to do ourselves, but.
Between, and, and I think where the devil's in the details is just figuring out what is done by Ecode 360 and what's done by our, our zoning consultant that we bring on. But I think we can make sure that they're clear about what lanes they're in.
In zoning consultant, you mean the money, the pot of money that we just received, the 97,000, that would be conceivably working on looking, doing kind of the deeper dive to like the map and like, starting fresh. We would also engage them to support in the Ecode 360 work as well? As, as needed?
They would need to know what's going on and just make sure they're not duplicating efforts. They just know who's in what lane on that. That's what I would think.
Okay. Helpful.
Yeah, so like, just reading through this document, like the section that's like access and ease of use, like almost all of that, I think is something that Ecode 360 would take care of. It's like hyperlinking, it recommends making it more navigable, headers and footers, numbering system being consistent. Also on page nine, above access and ease of use, it talks about scattering definitions throughout the document, centralizing all definitions as a recommended for transparency. That's, I assume that's something that Ecode 360, that's like the whole point of what they're doing.
Yes.
So then later in this document, they'll talk about things like you could add illustrations for dimensional setbacks. That seems like the type of thing that a consultant would do.
Right.
Absolutely.
Right, not Ecode 360. We would use a consultant to kind of create.
To develop the graphic, to develop the illustration.
Textual, things like that, yeah.
But then you just have a digital version, you'd give it to Ecode 360, they'd put it online.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So we could kind of go through this and just take a stab, or I can, you know, I can do that at like, what probably is covered by Ecode 360, and then what is later in the process.
The only downside about Ecode that I've ever found is the fact that you're disconnected from your data that to submit a change, it has to get submitted to the company, they're the ones managing and, you know, the information, and so you're paying an annual fee to them to do that. It's that, you know, the one handoff kind of pillar.
And then also my experience working and having our update, like where's the right document? Is this the document we should just, based on some of the turnover we've, I've seen just in my fairly short amount of time here, like the, having that like be the source of truth, I think would be helpful.
I agree, is that that's.
Whatever is in, I mean, the, the town clerk would still be obligated to have the true document. They'd have to know what it is, and then Ecode 360 is updating that from their platform. I would say, I, I came from a city form of government where I think it was less great about, it wasn't Ecode 360, it was another, another firm. They were less good about updating all the time because laws were changing a little more quickly there. The city council was changing laws often, which I don't, I don't recommend. But in town, if we're doing it once a year, twice a year, it's town meeting, it should be easier to keep track of everything.
Works.
Yeah.
Were you gonna say something, Kyle?
No, I don't think so. You spoke to it. I think one, one just consideration I would offer, a, a way to better, one use of the consultant, zoning consultant funds that might be worthwhile would be assistance in writing the warrants necessary to advance the zoning amendments, given that thanks to inconsistencies in mass general law, zoning amendments related to housing require simple majorities and others that require super majorities, those warrants, those amendments can't be combined, otherwise they're nullified. So, so there, there's a lot of thinking that needs to be put into just how you frame the warrants so that the attorney general will receive those kind of positively from the, from the offset.
That's a good flag.
Yeah, there's something to think about because it'd be a horrible reason to, to not have, you know, all that effort officially adopted.
Because right now it's just council reviewing them at the, on the end, on the backend, as opposed to us having more professional support on the front end of the drafting of the warrant articles.
Right, right.
What is the next step with this document? What do we, what do we do next? Do we make decisions about what we want to tackle first?
I think, actually, yeah, we might talk about that.
Okay.
Do we need slash, I just want to be conscious of Kyle's time and appreciate and want to thank you, Kyle, for all the work that you and Aiden, Aiden Wright, put into this. It's definitely helpful, especially with the model bylaws, because that's really like, the place we're at, we kind of need the, here's the model here, so we have something to work with because we'd like to move, I think, some of the, the next step I think Bella wants to talk about is like, all right, the clock is ticking to town meeting time, like what are the things that we should?
What can we do?
What can we do, knowing that there's gonna be going through this like process after, in 2026, heading into 2026?
The other thing we can start doing is thinking about what from here is turned into the scope of work for the zoning consultant, and start bringing an RFP together. Because we have enough funding that we do need to go to an RFP, unless we pick somebody up a state contract, which there might be someone good. But it'd probably be wise for us to start thinking about what work we want the consultant to do and, and start drafting that so we can get started soon, and get that out there.
Cool. And what, how long, or like, what do those funds have to be used by, the one-stop?
I think we have until the end of next fiscal year, not this one.
Oh, wow, so.
Thank. Yeah.
Wow.
June of 27?
Yes, I believe so. Yeah. It'll be here before you know it.
No, but a lot of times it's like, okay, here's a year, and like, the RFP takes, process takes like three months, you know what I mean? So.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, thank you so much, Kyle. Also, I'm not sure if you all know this, but Kyle is leaving PVPC. And is moving to a new, exciting position in New Town.
I am, yes. Yes, this is my last week with PVPC. Unfortunately, I won't be able to support.
Institutional knowledge.
I know.
I, I know, I've, I've gained a lot in just a short amount of time working with Hatfield, and I do have a fondness for your community, and I do wish you all the best. I think you're, you're taking really positive strides to not only address real constraints and concerns that you have in terms of the development and settlement of your town, but also I commend you for thinking a bit more creatively, considering topics like form-based code or other types of zoning and different mechanisms to, to think about how folks can use their property to, not just their personal gain, but also to, you know, the public good. So I wish you all the best, and yeah, Bella, I'll be in touch. I do have a nice improved zoning map drafted for you all. I just need to get a nice title put on it and print it out, but I'll have that delivered to the town in a short while.
That's the last thing that they were working on with the grant money was they put together a few large zoning maps for us that have street names and correct overlays.
Excellent.
Amazing.
He worked really hard on this, so.
Great. Thanks for all your hard work. Kyle, good luck to you.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kyle.
Do you have to learn all about New Hampshire zoning now? Gosh, Lord.
I know.
The list is so you can do what you want.
Yeah, right. Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you, Kyle. I'll talk to you later. Good night.
Should I end this, John, or does it matter? Should I end the go-to?
There's nobody on it?
Okay.
Where we at?
Stormwater.
Storm.
This is related to the town meeting bylaw that kind of came up last minute last year?
That's exactly right. So this all.
Earlier this year?
That's correct. So this begins with the notice that we received last year in January, February.
Oh, from FEMA?
Worse. I don't mean that. From the EPA. I'm not making a value judgment, I'm just making a severity judgment, but that's, it is what it is. We, EPA's been great to work with, so there you go. So the EPA came in with a, an order for compliance, saying that our current stormwater regulations were missing items from the, that were required by the Clean Water Act. Specifically, they were looking for us to pass a stormwater and post-construction, sorry, construction and post-construction stormwater bylaw consistent with their, their regulations, especially on the requirement of best management practices and other items for the specific pollutant requirements that they have. So there were two different ways we could have gone about this, because we do have a zoning bylaw that addresses many of the things that, that they were looking for, and it was close to compliance. There are a few items that were missing. We could have approved of that, or we, we could have made changes to that zoning bylaw, or we could have passed the general bylaw to instead kind of create a structure as well for this stormwater management that would then create a program that the planning board have to pass regulations on. So we went with the second option of passing this general bylaw. We had it drafted, we had it already kind of ready to go, so we went in that direction. Town council felt like that was basically a belt and suspenders approach, and it would work for having this overall permit that would apply to a number of different scenarios, and we'd also have the, the guidelines that are in our zoning bylaws that exists. So that's kind of part one of compliance with the EPA was passing this bylaw. The second thing we need to do is then fill that bylaw with the actual program, the actual regulations. And there's a couple of ways we can go about that. We are receiving assistance on this from the engineering firm that we often work with, DPC engineers. They're also helping us with catching up with our reporting and, and compliance on the MS4 program in general.
MS4 MEA.
I don't want to say that the whole thing.
Municipal storm sewer or something, something.
Yeah.
Separate storm sewer systems.
Got it, separate storm sewer systems.
Four S's in that.
It's funny because it starts with like small municipal, small isn't part of the, the S4, but yeah, municipal storm, separate stormwater systems. So where we're at now is that they are helping us with these, these program regulations, but I want to make sure to check in with everyone here because time is really ticking on this. EPA wanted us to, to have this compliance by February, early February of next year.
Of 2026.
Of 2026. And that really only gives us one meeting to then pass anything that, that comes, forget that. Now, I plan to tell EPA that we have the bylaw passed, we have our stormwater regulations already in the zoning, and we're pretty close to compliance at that point. If we have a program that's, you know, being drafted, that we should be pretty close to compliance. But if they do want to see something sooner, then I, I want to try to see if there's a path to, to having that program regulations up and running. So I feel like that's too much to accomplish in one meeting in January. I want to know if there's some interest in anyone from this group kind of working in a small subcommittee and trying to work with our engineers, me and, and others to, to draft some potential. to, to draft some potential, you know, regulations here. We have sample regulations to work with that they've given us. We have, in my mind, we want to make this as simple as possible. You already have regulations that are written in the, in the planning, uh, in the, in the zoning, uh, bylaws. We want to just incorporate the few lines that are missing based on what the EPA is looking for. We want to kind of tie back otherwise into the regulations that already exist and try to keep it as simple as possible is what I'm, I'd be looking at.
Still talking about lifting and loading it out of zoning?
I think, I think we would refer to the program guidelines and, and the, the standards that already exist in the, in the zoning.
And is this something ECO 360 would be like, this is redundant, it should lift in one or the other, or like?
Potentially, and, and I'd be on board with that, I think.
But regardless, EPA wants us to.
I think after we show compliance, then once we do the zoning review, we can put, put it in one place or the other, or if there's a reason to have them in both, then we'll keep them in both, but I think it's something we can clean up once we're in compliance.
So forgive me for sounding pedantic here.
Go for it.
We passed the bylaw, the general bylaw, that's in place now. We're now talking about amending the zoning bylaw to fix it so it is in compliance with the new standards.
Um, less amending the zoning bylaw and more of, um, the, the, the bylaw that was passed, the general bylaw that was passed says that the, um, planning board can create, uh, the regulations, uh, the rules and regulations for stormwater management that are referred to in the zoning bylaw.
Okay, so.
So we kind of need those rules and regulations.
No, that's fine. And these rules and regulations, we can review, adopt and pass ourselves.
That's correct.
We don't need town meeting. Fair enough. Okay. So then the only other question is if the general bylaw language is going to stay basically where it is.
Yep.
If that's its permanent home, then we can strip it out of the zoning bylaw, right?
You could certainly do that.
Or we can simply say stormwater management is managed under Hatfield general bylaw XYZ and point there.
You could certainly do that.
Yeah, okay.
But that's not the point of this.
That's not the point, no.
But it's a, it's a, it's an important clarification.
No, and that's fine. I, I think for clarity, it's something to, just to put a, a pin on that and, you know, it might be something real easy to do.
Yeah.
In terms of the rules and regs, yeah, okay, so what do we need to do? If nobody else has an interest, I'd be happy to help.
It sounds like the most boring thing to, I'm, so you're not, so you're desperate to do it. Obviously. I'll do it for another set of eyes, but I don't really want to be like, I don't know if I would be excited, not excited, but giving input.
We, we have resources that already exist, and, and my mind is kind of an exercise first in looking at what the, well, what the requirements are, what's in the, the sample bylaws that they have, sorry, sample rules and regulations that they have.
Yeah.
Lincoln. Yeah, that's the one that was passed out to you. That, those are, that's a sample.
We're thinking Lincoln passes muster.
I mean. Lincoln passes muster.
This is gonna basically be, uh, like a Mad Libs where we have to figure out where the blanks are, what we need to change.
Where the blanks are, and then, you know, as much as possible, I'd just like to take the definitions, the, the standards that already exist in the zoning bylaw. And then find what's missing, put it in there, and then we're done.
Fair enough.
That's, I think, the simplest way to, to approach it.
Creating, basically finding correspondence between the multiple documents, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Can we build a work session where we sit down and just work on it for a few hours?
I'd love to.
Okay, great. Let's do that.
Great.
The stormwater working group.
So, uh, is there anyone else?
Thanks, Doug.
Doug, thanks.
As long as it's not another meeting.
I will be happy to like help review or be in like another set of eyes, if that makes sense.
Bella and I can take a first stab at it and hopefully with some help from our engineering firm.
Like sometimes like not being in it, so reading and being like, what the heck? I'm gonna say what the heck because it's stormwater, but.
Yeah, we'll get there.
So we have two months or do we have less than two, like, does it need to be done before February 2nd, or is it like literally February 2nd? We turn it in. We vote on it before that at a hearing.
I think it's possible to receive an extension if we've already done the hard part, which is the, the.
If we have a draft.
Yeah, if we have a draft and if we already have a bylaw passed.
Doesn't need to go to town meeting.
Wouldn't have to go to town.
Doesn't have to go to town meeting, but does it need a public hearing?
Do we do?
Do you need a public hearing to pass regulations?
The rules and regulations. Well, rules and regulations for subdivisions you do.
Yeah, to pass rules and regulations. Um, it's, I mean, there's nothing in the bylaw we passed that says that you are subject to that, I think, in passing rules and regulations.
Then as long as we can prepare a good solid set, maybe by January.
There's, um, yeah.
By February meeting, maybe.
Definitely by February. I mean, we should be able to have a final document, but maybe a first draft for folks to look at.
In January meeting?
Yeah, later in January, later in January.
Yeah, we're gonna aim for the January meeting for you to have a solid draft.
Oh, okay.
I, I mean, or. Final, I'd like that.
No, 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 he's saying final draft or first draft in February or no?
Understanding that the next three to four weeks are going to be busy for a lot of folks.
Yeah, yeah.
Not Jimmy.
I'll have a few extra days off between the holidays, so maybe that might be a time to do it.
Perfect time to.
I'll, um. Curl up in front of a roaring fire and, and.
I'll check in with the EPA.
Read rules and regulations to all the children. There you go. Sure.
I tried reading to my, my daughter today and it just didn't catch her attention. Didn't do it. Three-year-old, man.
Was there anything else?
So, thank you. I think that's a path forward and also.
This is a story about the municipal separate stormwater and sewer systems, kids.
Here comes the EPA. Oh, no.
Oh, no. It's like ghostbusters all over again.
All right.
Moving on?
Please, please, moving on.
I don't know. That's our, oh, that's what the bylaw we just passed last year.
Is that it for me?
I like how he's a sponsor.
I could stick around.
Okay, so I've printed out some best thing for you to take home because it's very long and we're gonna want to talk about whether we like it or not, not tonight. Um, so read it.
Which one are we talking about? This one?
In January.
Yeah, that's the model bylaw.
Instead of an update, I thought it would be productive to use this time to talk about what we want to put on the warrant. So a very brief, this is literally almost just a list of the model bylaws that are in those appendices and a couple of other things that we could consider, and then I thought we should just.
This our menu of options?
To talk about.
What do we want to work on for the next several months?
Yes.
Putting it all on there.
There's a very short backside, but.
Possibilities. Ooh, I love this. Okay. Thank you for doing this, Bella. It's really good. This is related to, as you said, pulling out from what Kyle just produced with the comprehensive zoning review.
Right.
Was there anything additional to what was pulled out of there?
Um, just a couple of things, yeah. So, um, like I just threw the mobile homes thing on at the very last minute because you were talking about it at the top.
Yeah. Some, so some of the housing things, like Kyle said, it could be a whole, a warrant article about taking the exclusionary housing, zoning, uh, related to housing, uh, as a warrant article. So it would be like our definition of single-family home, mobile home. Interesting, okay.
Um, one thing I'm thinking about, and it's based, and it's prompted by, out of 2A on your list. Can we do a moratorium on any, uh, industrial scale energy, uh, generation until we actually get something in our zoning bylaw?
I think you asked Kyle this last time and he said, at least about, um, solar, you said about best.
Battery energy storage, and I know that that's not possible.
And I don't know.
Two towns have tried to do it and they got thrown out.
Okay. It would be whether the state is mandating any kind of thing or not.
Yeah, I'm thinking about if somebody wants to come along and, and put up a 50-megawatt biomass burning plant. I mean, they've got far higher hills to climb than getting past the planning board, but still.
Wasn't there talk at some point of somebody coming in to burn stuff in the end of Strayth Road?
Yeah, so the question is, is there a way to do a moratorium until we have that as a part of the bylaw?
Non-renew, or non-solar, non-electric energy generation.
I'm gonna want to say no based on other states, based on state stuff potentially, but we'll see.
That's the question we'll ask.
That's a good question.
Just curious. Okay. 1A, Roman numeral 1, 2, and 3?
Review, this is excluded.
1, 2, 3, yeah, okay.
Totally in favor of that? I think that's an easy thing, especially if we can just point to state language, state definitions and get rid of some of it from our.
Yeah, this is a kind of a little thing about our.
And it's stuff that ECO 360 would probably flag anyway, but we're just gonna get ahead of it because it seems, yeah. Yeah.
It's like we're out of compliance, we gotta do something.
Yeah.
And it's just doing this now as opposed to doing this two town meetings or three town meetings from now, based on the recommendations ECO 360 would also have. So it's just kind of like clean, doing a little lighter house, heat cleaning now.
Yeah. And it would be obviously really easy to justify if like there's some.
I think it would make sense to Kyle's point, bucket the housing stuff together, because that only needs a simple majority, right? That would be, what about, what do people feel about mobile homes? Oh, that's legally, right? Legally, we have to allow them based on HUD.
From what I understand, it's exclusionary to not allow them in residential zones. Um, I don't really know. I think what happens is a developer could say that you're prohibiting them from something they should be able to do, right?
Yeah, we have a general bylaw on that too, so that also needs to change.
That's so. I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not sure how we have a general bylaw saying no mobile homes, then we have mobile homes.
That's, I can't see how that's enforceable.
Grandfather didn't.
They locked him down.
So, okay, so that would involve, um, you're saying you're in favor of maybe requesting a, a review by our town council of exclusionary language and any provisions that we could bring, is that what you're saying? Number one?
What do other people feel? I don't want to be like, because these are like eight options. Which ones, let's keep, okay, so that's the first one.
For number one, I'm, I'm just making sure that that, because that would involve like talking to town council and getting them to look through.
The things that were flagged from, yeah, from Kyle and PVPC.
Item 6, I feel like we want to put that off. That's a big lift.
Mm-hmm. Agreed. And I think the consultant could take it on.
Item 7 is a big lift. That's a lot of conversation and we're gonna need some, some time to think about that.
I don't, that doesn't need for town meeting though, correct?
The open space development criteria?
Can we pass that ourselves?
Subdivisions.
Can we pass that ourselves?
That subdivision bylaws?
If that's, that's for subdivisions, then yeah, we can pass that.
I think it's something we should put on like the medium priority, like it should be, I think that's something that's we can do in the next year, but it doesn't.
Not on a time crunch.
Yes.
We can do it in May, we can do it too, yeah.
Number 7?
Yeah.
Because we can do it ourselves without town.
Because it's rules and regs, not.
Yep.
Yeah.
I like that.
I would like us to do that.
Let's pass it right now.
I would like to prioritize that. It seems like it'd be pretty easy to do.
Pass it right now, that's good.
But.
I have, uh, in terms of number 6, I don't have any problem with removing the procedure, um, excising it from the, on number 6. Removing procedure from the zoning bylaw as long as we put it directly into a manual.
For sure, exactly.
And then, and then we're, we're going to town meeting and we're saying, this is being removed, it's in a separate procedures manual that's available for public review.
Doable.
Is there a pro to having ECO 360 taking a review, look at what we currently have in the bylaws to recommend what that admit, even though we're gonna take it out of the manual and put it, take it out and put it in a manual, I would rather have ECO 360 recommend like what we would change, even if we're just gonna put it in a manual and then.
What would be the turnaround on that?
Andrew, what's our timeframe on first load of data?
Again, that's probably the 18, it's, it's, it's gonna take a little while, I think. I'm, I'm not sure. I'm not sure they're the vehicle. This feels like too specific, uh, for them, in my mind, but I'm not sure. This feels.
It could also be something like, to your point, the consultant could do too.
That seems like a better fit for me. You could ask them to do that sooner rather than later.
But then that's just, that's then something that would then go to 2027 town meeting potentially, or after.
The only other.
Sooner, I think from the consultant could get on that first, could be one of their first items if you wanted.
If we, we think we're gonna have a consultant by February to do this?
Time's up as we write the, uh.
RFP. I will help you, I will help you with RFP.
Yeah.
Also, if we're having, if we were to have a special town meeting for any reason next year, separating out something like that might be something to bring to special town meeting.
When it's just, when it's like you're not changing anything substantial, we're just taking this and putting it here.
Right, right. The home-based business model bylaw.
I think it'd be cool if we could bring it, and if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass, and if it does, great.
What, what number in?
Uh, number 3.
Up to 3.
Boy, I just see a lot.
People will be like. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like, I think it's something.
Already doing it.
If we could define what, in general terms, what a home-based business looks like, smells like, sounds like.
Might be worth looking very quickly at the bylaw that they just provided, because it, it's actually more lenient by far than what we have now. Allows for a much wider variety of impacts and.
That's nice.
Better.
Right, so I don't know how that would fly with people. People might actually hate that. I don't know.
Right now, it's pretty restrictive.
It's quite restrictive.
Weirdly restrictive.
But, but that, but that's my point is that if we, if we can define the criteria and put the criteria in the, in the zoning bylaw, what we think is acceptable.
Yeah.
Then at the bottom it says, if your business meets this criteria, no special permit is needed.
Right, right.
Go forth and be, and be, you know, productive.
Of the.
So where would this be for the business that I used to have, my catering business? My home, and the business was run out of my home and, um, but not functional out of my home. I had to have a commercial kitchen upright.
So you got a commercial kitchen offsite?
Yeah, had to buy, rent a commercial kitchen offsite.
So, so again, it, it depends on what criteria we define that, you know, that creates, if you will, the bucket in which your business would need to fit.
So it.
So, you know, I, I'm, let me use a different example. Someone wants to run a little, uh, a little mechanicing shop and they have lawn mowers and they repair lawn mowers. Okay, fine. Small amount of noise, everything contained in a garage, no worry. Okay, do they have outside storage? Maybe that's not that big of a problem if it's not visible from the public way. No worry. Now they're doing painting and things like that, but they have a fume, uh, you know, collection system and there's gonna be no vapors in the outside area. Again, no worry. But now they've got a compressor and it's outside and it's creating noise, you know.
They've got multiple employees.
Multiple employees who are bringing the, or they've got, there was work going on outside the business, about outside the garage in full view of the public way. It's like, eh, maybe that's outside the bucket that we defined.
Right.
We have to think about what it looks like, what it sounds like, literally what it smells like, and if we can define some limits on that, I don't care what the person's doing if it's not causing a major disruption to their immediate neighbors. And if provably can be said that that's.
I guess the question would be, do we like the model that they provided? Because that would be the easiest approach.
Yep, I think liking that and then editing it versus to fit our needs.
It's on page 25 of their appendices.
Yep, and I also think that it is valuable in getting this passed and putting through ECO 360 so that it's formatted, because this model bylaw isn't formatted in a way that currently exists, so.
Yeah, it's appendix B.
Page 25. And it's great, I think it's great. I think it's, there'd be some choice points that we would need to make.
Yep.
But is it on par? And we can even say like, take what we currently have in our bylaws and just put it in there, because there is some guidance around. We don't call it home-based business, we call it something else. Um, and, and then yes, to your point, in some ways it's more restrictive and in some, other ways it's not. I'd say we could just be more. Yeah.
Even this feels like it.
Like you could have up, this, the bylaw says you can have up to two employees that don't live there, like that can come and, you know.
And there's different, on page 26, there's, um, six different, well, five different styles of home-based business. It could be cottage industry, it could be home occupation, it could be a major cottage, those all have different like numbers of employees, different scales of impact. Um, and then they define like non-resident employees, um, and how that's.
The percentage of the home or the percentage of the dwelling that it takes up, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
And I'm, yeah, our current bylaws, I think, say something like, can't take more than 50% of the.
Floor space, yeah.
The dwelling. I think our bylaws only have like, yep. And I think our, because you, you know, you want it to be an accessory use, you don't want it to be the primary use.
Right.
And so that's a little percentage point, and these are a little more restrictive in that regard, yeah. Um, and also I noticed too, like, I could, you know, that it doesn't allow for stuff in garages detached. So that's like another.
Our current zoning doesn't?
No, our current does, but this, this does it. So there's question, those are choice points, right?
Yeah, right.
I would take the more flexible pieces of each of them.
Yeah. Yeah.
But yes, I think we should pursue something like this. And like, to your point, it's gonna be sticky to people, I'm sure. People are gonna have, because everyone's has their own personal opinions on it, and it's like.
But, but doing it right, doing it well, has a chance to change what is right now, a number of non-conforming uses into conforming uses by virtue of what they're doing, the scope of work that they, that they currently do.
And also then a lot of times you get a phone call saying, can I have a massage, like, place in my garage? Can I have the, and it's like.
Why not?
The way our current bylaws are, it's like, eh, you know, we can't tell. This way we could be like, yes, go look at this and this and tell me if your business. Yeah.
Right, so how did the tattoo place that we permitted? That doesn't fly in the face.
That isn't a home.
It's not in a home, right, right.
So since we have this, and with best, too, do we, I guess, my thought would be, you know, we meet, I think it might be worth meeting more than once a month between now and then either in January, and we need something for February for a hearing.
Yeah.
So I think it'd be useful to have a working group, at least one working group in January.
That sounds great.
Looking back, yeah, do we want to like circle around some of these that we do want to move forward with then?
Yeah.
So we said yes to the exclusionary zoning piece if we can, right?
Yes.
Is that true? The best model bylaw, we probably should.
But that we want to do as the working group that you just mentioned?
Yep.
Yes.
The home-based business, I think, yes.
Same, yes.
Short-term rental, I don't think it's a big issue, but I don't know, that's just me.
That's a hot...
Is there a general bylaw about short-term rentals?
Got nothing.
We have nothing just for ADUs.
The, to your point, 4B, it's not a huge issue at the time in Hatfield, but we'd have no way of regulating it if we received complaints for butters, for example.
I mean, if there's complaints like they threw a loud party, then just enforce your noise regulations.
Right.
We don't have noise regulations.
The enforcing agent for the zoning bylaw is the building inspector right now. Enforcement agent for the general bylaw is the police department. What a lot of towns do is they do put in zoning bylaws to say where and when you can do ADUs generally, but they also put in a general bylaw which says you have to be licensed annually, you have to be inspected annually.
Right.
And any problems or complaints, it would affect your licensing later on.
And that's what's in...
So it gives you a little bit of a stick to be able to work with. And it also allows the town to track who's renting them. You can adopt the local option tax, so on and so forth down the line.
Now, what you do have is, it's not, it doesn't show up anywhere in your table of uses to have short-term rentals.
No, it doesn't.
So if it's not a permitted use, if someone were to be operating one, you could say it's not a permitted use, it can be shut down. Believe it's an option for you.
Right.
And it is legally a commercial use. It would fall under cottage industry. Well, no, it wouldn't because it'd be like more than 50% of, yeah, it's a stone animal.
So that's on page 38 of their thing, if you...
I'm like, I'm the one that's like, I don't know. I know I'm always the person that's like, let's be more proactive than reactive, but this doesn't, I don't know.
How many, how many do you think you have in town?
The last time I looked, like a year ago, like three.
What, ADUs?
Yeah.
A short-term.
Not ADUs, like Airbnb.
Strews, short-term rentals.
I have one.
Yeah, but like, I don't, and like I go online and you're looking, there's not more, it's not like we're flooded with Airbnb options, right?
There's two on Prospect Street. And I don't know of another one.
Well, in the, yeah, the model bylaws provided is listed under general bylaws, so...
They did it on the general side so they can create a licensing structure for it?
Yeah. And honestly, I think that if we were to do something... AD user allowable and require allowable as a use in residential zones and require permitting, licensing from the select board or other licensing authority, please refer to the general bylaws section XYZ. I mean, unless we really want to wade into accessory dwelling or short-term rentals.
I don't think we need to yet. I don't know. That's my opinion. I don't know how others...
I don't see it as a big issue.
With all the other things that you do have that would make a big difference, yeah. The short term, I would leave that one out for now.
Right, it doesn't really impact us.
We could soon be in conflict with Boston if we try to do something. I mean, it's getting too...
What do you mean?
It's getting too popular.
All the, all the short-term rentals from Boston would come out to Hatfield all of a sudden?
I'm saying just mass general law. With the ADUs, less restrictions, and then we're stuck with what?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Sure, you say they've mostly left it to the locals to figure out.
Expanding and expanding. He wants the cats out of the bag.
All right, 5, mixed-use center, yeah, I agree that that, we're not going to be ready for that. Creating a mixed-use village center by law.
We want the consultant to do that.
Consultant work, yeah.
That's tricky one.
Separating out the criteria of, yeah, it's number 6, we said consultant. 7, I think we should do, but like on our own time, sometime next year.
Yep.
8, adopting more robust outlines for pre-existing non-conforming use, alterations, extensions, pre-existing non-conforming uses.